Good morning and welcome. We've come together today to begin our work on the proposed county budget for fiscal year 2026. Please ensure all phones and electric devices are set to silent. I love, I'm watching all these people going, oh, quick, let me turn off my phone. So now we are going to have the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Mr. Smith?
If I may, go ahead and please stand. I'm going to bring up DeMarcus Smith. He is the campus pastor for Union Church at BWI, and I'm just so grateful for him to be here to open us up with prayer. DeMarcus, I think, because I didn't realize the county exec had the body mic on him and not.
Good morning. If you all may, please bow your heads and join me in this moment of prayer. Heavenly Father, we thank you. We thank you for this day. We thank you for this time. We thank you for this opportunity that on this national day of prayer, we pause, we reflect, and we recognize your love, your grace, and your mercy towards us. On today, Father, we seek your wisdom, your courage, your understanding, your guidance. God, we thank you for every single man and woman that you've called to serve and lead here in Anarundel County. Father, today you've entrusted them with a great responsibility, so we pray that you will give them discernment and integrity as they get ready to make some sound decisions for every single man, woman, child, school, first responder, community here on today. Father, we thank you for collaboration. We thank you for clarity. We thank you for consistency. We thank you for compassion. Bless these men and women. Bless this county. Bless this council. In your Son Jesus' name, we all say, amen and amen. Thank you.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are honored to have many of our elected officials in the audience this morning. Thank you all for being here. I'm going to recognize you, and even though we all love applause, let's hold our applause and just let them give a wave so we can move on more quickly. Dr. Mark Bedell, Superintendent of Anarundel County Public Schools; Robert Silkworth, President of the Board of Education; Joanna Tobin; Erica McFarland; Don Pulliam; and Dana Schalheim, all also with the Board of Education; Mayor Gavin Buckley from the city of Annapolis; Delegate Dylan Baylor; Delegate Stuart Schmidt; Delegate Gary Simmons; Delegate Mike Rogers; and Delegate Mark Chang; Sheriff Sesker is here; Jennifer Garcia from the Office of Delegate Andrew Pusky; Rory Nolan from the Office of Delegate Heather Bagnall; Allison O'Brien from the Office of Maryland Senator Don Guile; Danielle Acquara from the Office of Congresswoman Sarah Elfrid; Jessica Klaitman from the Office of U.S. Senator Chris Van Hollen; Jessica Cook from the Office of U.S. Senator Angela Alsbergs; Dylan Goldberg and Madison Bryce from the Office of Governor Wes Moore. Did I forget anyone? Oh, Gloria, I'm sorry. Board of Education member Gloria Dent. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see her. So, yes, and our student member of the board. We're always very grateful to have all the students here. Thank you so much. So, all right. At this time, it is my pleasure to introduce County Executive Stuart Pittman.
I do have a mic, but it wasn't on. Good morning. Great turnout. Standing room only. I, so first, I really want to thank everybody who showed up this morning and everybody who's listening from somewhere. Your presence is an acknowledgement that local government matters, and it does. So I am here at the invitation of the seven members of the Anarundel County Council to share my thoughts about the FY26 county budget proposal that you will spend the next six weeks improving and assessing, and I look forward to the process. Before I go on, I want to note that this speech does not cover all of the programs, the projects, the investments that the county is making, so don't be offended if I don't mention what you're here for. But we do have fact sheets online, and you can go online and you can look at the complete budget. But I want to break that rule and just tell the ag students who are listening online with bated breath that, in fact, that $70,000 that you want for the program in the schools' budget is in there, so y'all can, y'all, please listen to the rest. But I was told that they were eagerly awaiting that news. So with that covered, I will say that, in fact, it is often said that budgets reflect values, and they do. But county budgets also reflect what's happening at the state, the nation, and in the world. So we are in a defensive posture. Direct and cruel attacks are being launched every day by the federal government. Those attacks target our workers, our businesses, our retirees, our judges, our men and women in uniform, our schools, our immigrants, our colleges and universities, and our environment. Our job, the job of our agencies, our elected officials, our nonprofit partners, is to protect our people, to protect them from harm. That's what I was told growing up, growing up with a father who had worked in the Pentagon overseeing civil defense during the Cuban Missile Crisis. Nobody knew then how many Americans would survive a nuclear attack, but they built bomb shelters and planned urban evacuations to protect as many people as they could. Nobody knows how far this federal government will go in its efforts to dismantle the public and private sectors that have made our nation great. But in Anarundel County, we will protect our people. And the foundation of that protection is financial. It is how we tax and how we spend the public's money. The fiscal foundation of Anarundel County is strong, and it's strong because we made it that way. We grew our economy, budgeted responsibly, taxed progressively, and now find ourselves able to protect our people from the worst of the federal impacts while keeping our taxes the lowest in central Maryland. This budget does not raise taxes. Our proposed income tax remains lower than all central Maryland counties and includes a progressive structure to protect our lowest-income earners and ask a little more from those at the very top. Our property tax rates will actually decline, 98.3 cents to 97.7 cents for every $100 of assessed property. Our neighbors pay from $1.10 to over $2. If your property is your primary residence, our county's homestead credit is far more generous than most. Increases in your assessed value above 2% per year are not taxed in this county. For lower-income homeowners, we're proposing an increase in the value of our supplement to the homeowner's property tax credit. So our Budget Office projects that revenues from income tax, property tax, real estate transfer tax, and other recurring county income will bring in $2,235 million in the fiscal year that begins July 1st. That's a very healthy $105 million over what we budgeted last year. But if you attended one of our Budget Town Halls or went online and looked at the slides from those meetings, you saw that most of that new money is absorbed by increasing costs, things we are legally obliged to pay for. Not much left to fund new projects. So here's what we did. One, we messaged to our residents and to our department heads that this would be a tight budget year. Two, we scoured every department's current budget and made any cuts that we could justify without reducing essential services. Three, we asked department heads to limit any supplemental budget requests to items that had a direct and significant impact on services that our residents rely on. And four, I made very clear exactly what I heard in the Budget Town Halls, that county programs that serve those most impacted by the federal cuts, our most vulnerable residents, must be funded. So let's start with food. Our food bank advocates made a compelling case at every Budget Town Hall this year for $1.5 million to support families facing the impacts of the economic injustice that is coming their way. We're recommending full funding of that proposal. Our Department of Health, in recent years, created the Health Ambassadors and Healthy Communities Program with federal recovery funds. They're working to connect vulnerable residents to all health services, including mental health and addiction recovery. This budget continues those programs and makes them recurring. You can clap for that if you want. I mean, this is a, this is a community event, right? If you like it, and if you don't like it, you could boo if you want, but I won't encourage that. Health, Department of Health, also oversees the community-led violence interruption work that is saving lives and creating opportunity, both in Eastport and in Severn. Both were pilots, and in this budget, both are being funded as ongoing programs. We all know that our community-based nonprofit organizations will step up to carry our people through economic hardship if they have capacity and support. That's why we created the nonprofit center at Crownsville, and that's why this budget funds two positions to staff it. Our dedicated real estate transfer revenue for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund will grow. It'll grow by 40% this year, as we expected it would. That will allow us to hire an administrator for our new moderately-priced dwelling unit program, continue support for eviction prevention, assist families struggling with homelessness, and continue the momentum that we celebrate, that we are celebrating this year with ribbon cuttings at a record seven new affordable housing developments in the county. All right. Got some advocates there. So we have a long way to go, but our efforts to confront the housing crisis are having an impact. So a few weeks ago, I met with two seasoned police officers from Texas and Florida. They were here from CALEA, the National Accreditation Body, to assess the effectiveness and professionalism of our police department. I already knew we were good and that the 77 million growth in our budget, our police budget, over the last six years was paying off. But they told me that we are setting a new standard in policing for others to strive for, and I think they're right. And the FOP often reminds me that I say this, but public safety is the most fundamental obligation of government to its people, so we will do more. This budget fully funds the department's request for five new positions to allow our brand-new real-time information center to operate a fully-staffed second shift. It's a big one. Our outstanding fire department has also made huge progress with expanded staffing and modernized equipment over the last six years, but we can do more. The department requested five new positions dedicated to the Training Academy this year and summer staffing enhancements for our brand-new fire boats. Those positions are in this budget. With our courts now targeted by the Trump administration as an obstacle to authoritarian rule, we must protect their safety. This budget continues Sheriff Sesker's initiative to expand courtroom coverage by creating two civilian positions that allow deputies to serve where we need the most. So none of the services the government provides can be delivered efficiently without wages and benefits that will attract and retain a talented workforce. This budget delivers that, with fair and competitive contracts already negotiated for all bargaining units and a similarly competitive 3% cost-of-living adjustment plus merit increase for non-represented employees. Government efficiency also depends on very complex IT systems. After falling behind for many years, our county is catching up with a newly-integrated enterprise-wide system with a land-use navigator that gives communities and developers the transparency and accountability that they have been seeking, and dozens of other projects that are making systems more responsive, more efficient, and more secure. It ain't cheap. It's a $4.3 million increase over last year, but backing away from the progress we've made would cost us far more. I know we're not clapping on that one, are we? That's like, $4.3 million. As I have said, the most direct threat to the fiscal health of our county is the federal government. It has cut or threatened to cut longstanding support for emergency management, healthcare, housing, public safety, infrastructure, and education. It is implementing the largest tax increase on consumers in world history through tariffs, dismantling the global trade system that made ours the strongest economy in the world, and seeking authorization to grow the national debt once again. Combined, these changes have led economists to the conclusion that we are likely to face an end to our impressive recent growth in GDP. In fact, we've already seen it this quarter, at the beginning of a national and possibly a global recession. So to protect our people, this budget invests to keep our rainy day funded at the maximum allowable level of 8%. But that money can only be used if the projected revenues in a balanced budget fall short. It's designed for the very real prospect of an economic downturn. I wanted even more protection, protection that would allow us to backfill cuts to our most essential federal funding, cuts that the president and congressional leaders have said are coming. This budget sets aside $10 million to protect our people from those attacks. Recommendations for disbursement of those funds will come from our inter-agency Federal Disaster Preparedness and Recovery Work Group and be distributed only after county council approval. Is it the money or the approval part? Okay. The federal government's mission of mass deportation will also have devastating effects on our communities, on our economy, and our local institutions. That is why this budget creates a family protection initiative that will support children who lose a parent or guardian to deportation and provide legal defense services for low-income residents, upholding due process for our most vulnerable people. Switching gears slightly, this county has, for too long, underfunded its shelter and adoption services for animals, animals whose owners have failed them, and it's time we stepped up, and this is the year. I propose that we fully fund the requests for positions needed to adequately staff a new Department of Animal Services. So I have saved, you know, the investment in our future, in our kids, in our public schools, for last. It's as large as all of other investments combined, and it should be. I and my team listened closely to teachers, to school staff, to parents, to students at the Budget Town Halls, and we carefully reviewed Superintendent Bedell's budget proposal to the Board of Education and then the final budget request that the board sent to us. Our year-over-year increases for the AACPS budget during my time in office were as follows, starting with FY20. $46 million, $16 million, that was the COVID year, $35 million, $50 million, $47 million, and $48 million. Those numbers are double the average increase during the last administration. When I asked in recent years about the burden of funding the blueprint for Maryland's future, I would say that it has not been a burden because our county has chosen to invest in what the blueprint is seeking to do. We've all seen the return on these investments. Increased pay has drastically reduced staff vacancies. Test scores are improving, and according to Test Prep Insight, Anarundel County now has the most envied school district in the DMV. But when I saw this year's initial projections, projections of cost increases, revenue estimates, and state budget cuts, I worried that we'd be unable to maintain our momentum and that our educators, our students, and our schools would suffer. None of us wanted that to happen. We wanted to protect our people, particularly our young people, so we will. This budget grows our support for Anarundel County Public Schools by more than we have ever grown in a single year. It's a $52 million investment. That $52 million gets us the step increase in 3% COLA that was in the superintendent's request for all bargaining units, and that is necessary, in my view, to maintain the progress that we're making in recruitment and retention so that eventually we can staff up to the levels needed to implement the Blueprint's plan for teacher collaborative planning time. That $52 million also gets us 28 new special education positions that, combined with the couple of dozen existing vacancies, yes, will move us another step forward on the superintendent's plan to address that urgent need. It also adds 10 English-language arts and two bilingual facilitator positions, 14 community schools program managers, and 11 social-emotional learning positions. Even with this record investment in public education, I will note that the $52 million of new funding is only half of what our bipartisan Board of Education unanimously requested. Getting that number to a level that we could afford took many hours of work between our Budget Office and the AACPS team, and I want to thank Dr. Bedell, Matt Stansky, Chris Trumbauer, and all of the number crunchers who work for them for their spirit of collaboration. It's kind of an example that a lot of us should follow. So balancing a budget proposal that protects our people without raising taxes in the current environment is no small feat. To fully explain it, I'd need to call on the team that made our pitch last month to the bond rating agencies. We'd talk about economic drivers, environmental assets, education outcomes, moving people into the workforce, government efficiency, careful accounting, and disciplined budgeting practices adhered to by both the administration and the county council. All of these contributed to our third year of three AAA bond ratings, and all of these make it possible for us to continue protecting our people while other jurisdictions face So I and my staff look forward to engaging with all seven of you in the coming six weeks as you start digging through these 992 pages, capital and operating. I will note that they're pink this year and that three council members got, it's sort of four got the memo. I did not, I'm sorry, but it's a wear pink day. Maybe when you pass the final budget, everybody can work back. So, yeah, so if you're looking, if you're listening in today and looking for specific items in either the operating or capital budget, please go to acounty.org/budget and dig right in. I hope you'll be pleased with what you find, and if not, I suspect that your council member would like to hear from you. County Council public hearings are scheduled for the 14th and the 21st of this month, and I hope everyone will engage. Again, thank you for the honor that it is to present this FY26 budget proposal to the Anarundel County Council, and I will say that I remain convinced that we are continuing to make Anarundel County the best place for all. Thank you.
We're not, we're not adjourned yet, folks. Hold on. Hold on. So, they are. Sorry, I got the hammer. Thank you, Mr. Pittman. We greatly appreciate you, and we, I want to give a big thanks to all of the budget staff, Mr. Trumbauer and his team, that have been working diligently for months to put this together. For, I will take a moment of privilege as the chair to say that I am, this reflects many of my priorities that we need to, at this uncertain time in our country, to be protecting our most vulnerable people, so I am encouraged that that is a top priority in this budget. And I look forward to working with my colleagues over the coming weeks to perfect it even more as we go forward. So we will now take a recess until 12:30 PM. May I have a motion to recess until 12:30? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. We will return at 12:30 PM. Thank you. All right. Welcome back, everyone. It's a much smaller crowd than we had earlier. Everyone didn't want to stay. Chris, this is your show, and they abandoned you. I'm sorry. So.
I'm missing the last part.
I know. I know. Now we get into the nitty-gritty. I feel like I'm echoing. Does it sound echoey?
Yes.
Okay.
Probably because she had to, like, do the body.
Was it? Okay. It's very loud.
They have the microphone too far.
Yeah.
Darn tall people.
Okay. May I have a motion that the partial reading of any bill or resolution, amendment to a bill or resolution, or minutes constitutes the reading of the whole?
So moved.
So moved. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Madam Secretary, please read the lines of the bills to be introduced this afternoon.
Bill Number 3325, An Ordnance Concerning Annual Budget and Appropriation Ordinance of Anarundel County. Bill Number 3425, An Ordnance Concerning Tax Leveys, Special Community Benefit Districts, Shore Erosion Control Districts, and Waterways Improvement Districts. Bill Number 3525, An Ordnance Concerning Tax Leveys, Arundel Gateway Special Taxing District. Bill Number 3625, An Ordnance Concerning Tax Leveys, Arundel Mills Special Taxing District. Bill Number 3725, An Ordnance Concerning Tax Leveys, Dorchester Special Taxing District. Bill Number 3825, An Ordnance Concerning Tax Leveys, National Business Park Special Taxing District. Bill Number 3925, An Ordnance Concerning Tax Leveys, National Business Park North Special Taxing District. Bill Number 4025, An Ordnance Concerning Tax Leveys, Two Rivers Special Taxing District. Bill Number 4125, An Ordnance Concerning Tax Leveys, Village South at Wachappel Special Taxing District. Bill Number 4225, An Ordnance Concerning Finance, Taxation, and Budget, Parking Lot and Garage Tax. Bill Number 4325, An Ordnance Concerning Public Works Utilities, Metered Water and Wastewater Charges. Bill Number 4425, An Ordnance Concerning Public Works Solid Waste Collection, Solid Waste Service Charge, Solid Waste Landfill and Facility Delivery Fees. Bill Number 4525, An Ordnance Concerning Public Works Utilities, Water and Wastewater Capital Facility Recruitment Charge, Capital Facility Connection Charges. Bill Number 4625, An Ordnance Concerning Property Tax and Semi-Annual Payment Service Charge.
Take a breath. So, all right. We will now hear from the Planning Advisory Board. Please come forward, Mr. Kurtz.
Hi, my name's Gus Kurtz. I'm Chair of the Planning Advisory Board. And two things first. One, happy birthday, Pete.
Oh, I didn't know that was his birthday.
And two, I think it's too nice outside to be in here.
Agreed.
So the Planning Advisory Board believes that the CIP, which is our capital budget, should be consistent with the county goals, policies, and plans, including Plan 2040, the Master Water Sewer Plan, and the functional plans that are adopted by Anarundel County. The PAB also believes that the CIP should be, to the greatest extent possible, consistent with the current adopted program. Initially, the department requests that were forwarded to the PAB for our deliberation was a total of $1.5 billion and $407 million over affordability. We initially met in February, and those numbers, we were able to get down to about $40 million over affordability, which still wasn't where we needed to be. So after, on our meeting March 26, the Budget Office, with their updates and their interim deliberation meetings, we were able to deliberation meetings, we were able to recommend a budget that was within $5 million under Additionally, the PAB notes that across all the project classes, there is many multi-year reoccurring projects that have requested additional funding every year, and these are due to cost escalations. These reoccurring funding projects, it's not sustainable to cut them, and then next year they have to be increased, cut them, have to be increased. So we'll just make a note that these, a lot of these reoccurring projects are underfunded, and they need to be fully funded. Finally, the PAB noted that a number of the projects and programs are anticipated to receive state and federal funding. The PAB recommends that taking advantage of these funds when available, but however, some of these projects, if they do not receive the state or federal funding, may have to be reexamined or reevaluated because they may not be affordable without the matching Finally, in offering our recommendation, we have met the target of keeping our capital budget and program within the limits of affordability over the entire span of the six-year program. It is a little lumpy. Some years were over affordability, some years were under, but at the end of the six years, we're $5 million under affordability. The final advisory recommendation, the exact number was $5.804 million under affordability. The current year 26 budget will be about $15 million over affordability. There are six projects that we would like to draw your attention to because they're really good projects and some good things are taking place. One, and there's no specific order, one, the Millersville Library. This project is recommended to be shifted from the CIP, from the capital budget, to the operating budget. The PAB commends the public library for their work to seek a public-private partnership with the YMCA and coalesce these facilities that will serve the Millersville community. And specifically, the library was probably not affordable to take on itself. So that's a really good program. Second, the West County Swim Center. The PAB commends the Department of Recs and Parks for their work to find a new location for a swim center in a high-to-medium-needs area, which was identified in the 2022 Land Preservation Parks and Recreation Plan. And additionally, the PAB notes that the work of the department to seek grants and outside funding opportunities that significantly reduced the county contribution of this project. Next, the fire apparatus replacement expansion. Although this project is recommended to be shifted to the operating side, the PAB would still like to acknowledge that the extraordinary cost of a piece of fire equipment has more than doubled. And we want to make sure that the PAB recommends that the fire department and their work can maintain that the apparatuses and equipment and the fire stations are fully funded. Next, the information technology enhancement. We would like to commend the work of the Office of Information and Technology in addressing the recent cyber incident and support the work of the department to maintain county Two more projects. One, the Brooklyn Park Library. The PAB supports investment in the Brooklyn Park Library to provide modern community spaces in an area that has been historically underserved in the county. And then last, the Agricultural Preservation Program. And sometimes, some years, we see no requests for this, and then other times, we see a lot of requests. The PAB would like to note the importance of the county's preservation programs to support once-in-a-lifetime rural and agricultural opportunities, and would like to emphasize that if these projects are not funded when they arise, there may never be another chance to fund these preservation projects. So with that, I'm not, I could go over a whole bunch of numbers, but the bottom line is, summation is overall, the county's in good financial shape.
Thank you, Mr. Kurtz.
And any questions?
Yes, any questions or comments from the council? I think we're good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We appreciate all your work.
Thank you.
So, next up, we will hear from the Spending Affordability Committee. Dave, and how do I pronounce the last name?
Jupe.
Jupe. Didn't want to say it wrong. Mr. Jupe.
Thank you. No, don't feel bad, everyone gets it wrong. Good afternoon. My name is David Jupe. I'm the Chair of the County Spending Affordability Committee. And as you know, each year, the committee makes a recommendation to the county, which is a non-binding limit for growth in the FY2026 operating budget as well as the county debt limit. The county, the committee's charge is to provide a spending limit that is affordable to the residents of the county, and the measures that the committee uses is to look at growth in personal income, which serves as a proxy for growth in the economy. So the main point is that if the budget is growing much faster than growth in the economy, then it makes it more likely that county residents may be asked to pay higher taxes and fees, and the budget may not be affordable. For fiscal 2026, the committee is making a recommendation of 4.9% for a growth limit, which would be an increase of $176 million to $2.226 billion. Throughout the fall, the committee held meetings and looked at measures of the county's economy. And at the time, you know, everything was looking pretty good. The unemployment was low, wage growth was high, and inflation was getting very near to limits or the target suggested by the Federal Reserve Board. The committee did have some concerns about the low volume of home sales because of higher mortgage rates, which obviously affects transfer and recordation taxes. And the committee did have some concern about the news that the incoming administration had planned to make reductions in the federal workforce, but nothing was really known at that time. Since then, I mean, the economic data is still good through February. Unemployment is 2.9% in the county. Personal income expenditures are down to 2.5%, which is close to the 2% target for the Federal Reserve Board. There is continued wage growth, although we did hear today that GDP for the first quarter was negative. The committee did look at various measures of economic projections provided by RESI of Towson, Moody's Analytics, and the State's Bureau of Revenue Estimates. And in reviewing those, we saw a range of 3.9% to 4.9% of growth rates for fiscal 2026. Given the wage growth that the county has seen in recent years, the committee felt that 4.9% was the most appropriate growth level. The committee does have some concerns going forward about the effect of the loss of federal employment on income tax revenues, and also the tariff policies of the country may lead to higher inflationary costs, so it might cost more to provide services for the county residents in fiscal 2026. The committee also looked at recommendations for the capital debt limit. The recommendation from the committee is 4.9%, but county policy limits that to 4% of personal growth, personal income growth. And so that would be an increase of $202 million to $2.259 billion. So in conclusion, the committee felt that the recommendations that it has made are, continue to be reasonable for a 4.9% growth limit. There are some concerns, and the county will have to pay attention to its income tax levels, and hopefully mortgage rates will come down at some point and lead to higher home sales again. But in the short term, things continue to look good, and that's the committee's recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jupe. Do I have any questions, comments from council? So, thank you very much. We appreciate your work. And now, finally, we will welcome the star of the show for budget season, Mr. Budget Officer, Chris Trumbauer.
Okay, it works and everything. Yes, I will do that. And you? No? I don't know. Fill screen mode, look at that.
There we go.
Hey, all right. Well, good afternoon, council. Pleasure to be here. I am your Budget Officer, Chris Trumbauer, and I would like to start this off by thanking you in advance for the work that you are about to put in over the next 45 days. I'd also like to welcome Madam Acting Auditor to your role. I look forward to working with you. It's going to be a wild ride. It's all going to end up fine. It's a good budget. You guys are going to make it better. So I have some bad news and some good news. The bad news is I've got about 75, 80 slides. The good news is I talk fast and move quickly, so we're going to get through this, okay? But before I dive in, I want to do something very important, which is to acknowledge my budget team, who is the brains behind this operation. I'm just a pretty face, okay? So anyway, I'd like to introduce them. I think most of them are here. When I call your name, if you can stand and remain standing, please. Hooja Haseem is our Budget Administrator, and Hooja also does the revenue projections. Steven Teroux is our Assistant Budget Officer. He leads the operating budget. Naomi McAllister is our Senior Budget and Management Analyst, as she leads the capital budget. And then our budget analysts are Bozow, Kyle Madden, Marika Hanam, Neil Bergstrom, and Janay Molden. So these are the folks that put together the thousand pages in this book. All right. So now, I know what you're thinking. You're thinking, hey, Chris, what's in the budget? Boy, have I got a show for you. Okay, so if you want to follow along, here's the table of contents. You guys know, but we start working on the budget in September. Where we are now is May 1. Guess what? I'm done with budget. It's all up to you guys now. All right, so we like to look back at 2025. That's the current year. We're more than halfway through. We're about three quarters. And as we look at the '25 revenue that's coming in, everything is coming in basically above where we projected, which is good. We budget conservatively. We like to see that. But there are a couple of things I want to point out to you. Income tax and investment income. These are both unusually high, you know, compared to what we're estimating now versus what we approved the budget. And there are two separate reasons for that, but they both involve one-time funds. So the income tax, we're still receiving an elevated amount of fiduciary and penalty returns, basically tracking back to when the Biden administration increased IRS staff and had them go after tax cheats and do all that stuff, right? So we're still getting some of that money back. On the investment income, county has a lot of cash in various accounts. That earns interest. Guess what? Just like your home savings accounts, hopefully you're earning pretty good interest rates on that, we are too. We know that's not sustainable, so we don't count on that money from here forever, but we do acknowledge it, but that is one-time money. So everything else is pretty much on track. I will note that recordation and transfer is bouncing up about $15 million. That is good, but you'll remember, we pretty much hit a bottom on that when the real estate interest rates went up super high and people stopped selling homes. So we're seeing now the organic growth of that starting to return. All right, so here is the '25 budget projected results from where we stand now, okay? So the approved budget was about $2.1 billion and change. Our realizations, what we think now, is a little over $2.2. So that's about $87 million more than we anticipated when you all approved the budget last year, right? On the expenditure side, we're very close to where we were. We'll dip into fund balance a little bit, but we'll be $2.6 million over, we think, where we are now. And so if you even those two numbers out, you get $84.3 million, okay? That number is in green. I want you to remember that. So if you look at our actual fund balance utilization, we had planned in the FY25 budget to use $182 million. We're telling you, we think that we'll only need to use $84 million, so that gives us about $98 million to the good, okay? Now, here's another way to do that. You can look at the fund balance at the end of our annual report of '24 actuals. That's 274. Remember, we designated that 182 number, so that should give us 91.8 available on July 1 of '24. Remember that we are underutilizing $84.3 million, so that gives us $176.1 million available for this budget at the end of this fiscal year, okay? And you can back end that here at the bottom, 274 minus that 98 gives you the same number, okay? So math is fun. It works. When it doesn't work, you have a problem. All right, so now let's talk about FY26. What's the budget? This is how we generally refer to the budget. This is the general fund expenditure budget, okay? $2.4 billion, now $166 and change million of that is fund balance, okay? So, year-to-year growth, if we look at the approved budget for '25, we look at what we're submitting to you in '26. That is an increase of $89 million. That's a little under 4%. I like to compare apples to apples. We'll get that fund balance out. We'll get the one-time stuff out. Then we're looking at an increase of 111.5, so that's closer to a 5% increase year-over-year. I'm not going to go through all the highlights because you sat through the county exec's budget speech just like I did, but in summary, there's a lot of great stuff in here. This page is a reference to show you the things that we're kind of highlighting. This is a great reference. When I put stuff like this up, I show you on the screen what page in the budget book that you can go and find it yourself, okay? But this is each and every department, what their '24 actuals were, what their '25 approved budget is, what we're estimating now that to be, and what we're proposing for '26, okay? So you can pick your favorite department. You can see did they get more or less funding. You can see how they're growing or subtracting year-over-year. This is a great reference sheet for you guys, so maybe, you know, put a little star next to it. All right, opioid restitution fund. This is specific money we get from the settlement case. We treat this as recurring because this money will be coming in for decades, okay? We're getting about, on average, it goes up and down, but on average, about $4.5 million annually. We are maintaining a healthy fund balance in there, so we're appropriating more than that amount this year. But here are the things that are being spent on the ORF, and this is in the health budget and in the detention budget. Okay, '26 revenue detail, here's where the fund starts. Here's our general fund, $2.41 billion. Now, you might be thinking to yourself, Chris, you just showed the number that was 2.401. Well, the extra $10 million there is the $10 million we're holding in reserve for the Federal Response Fund that the county executive mentioned, okay? So I just wanted to clear that up. Here is our pie chart. This shows you where our revenue comes from. Basically, three quarters of it is property tax and income tax, and the other things are spread around in that last quarter of the pie. Here's numbers to the percentage. I did want to call out two things again here. You can see, if we look at the '25 revised projections, most of the major components are within 5%, which is pretty good. There's two that don't meet that criteria. Local sales tax, this is increasing more because we are increasing the local parking fee or parking tax for the first time since 1999, we found out. That is a flat fee. It doesn't index when the parking lots raise their increase. We don't see that. So we are, for the first time in about 25 years, we're increasing that. So that's the extra revenue there. And then on investment income, I mentioned this earlier, we treat that as one-time revenue. Even so, we are projecting an increase in the recurring because we think that elevated rates will be here for a little while, but again, not what they are right now. So that's going down compared to what we're proposing in '26 versus what's '25 revised. But if you look budget-to-budget on the approved level, it's going up a little bit, okay? But all things total, if you look at the very bottom, you can see the percent change. Budget-to-budget is 4.7, and if you look at our revised numbers, it trims it down a little bit to 4%. Okay, so now we're going to talk about the individual revenue components. Again, if you want to learn all about property tax, you can go to page 44 in the budget book. But for '25, we're looking at about $7 million more than anticipated in personal property tax receipts. We got this estimate from the state. They gave us an estimate within the last month or so that was more than we budgeted for. That is great news. This was not specific to Anarundel County. It was across- It was across all the jurisdictions in the state. So, that is good, and it helped our budget. If we carry that forward till 2026, you can see that our assessable base is increasing just shy of 4%. Our January CPI number, which we use to calculate the property tax revenue cap, is 3%. So, that gives us a rate of .977 for countywide. That is a decrease of .6 cents to the current rate, which is 98.3 cents. You can see the corresponding numbers for our friends in the city of Annapolis and the town of Highland Beach there. All told, we're looking at a 4% increase budget-to-budget in property tax revenue overall. All right, I have some good news for you. Last year, we are the 12th lowest jurisdiction in Maryland, right in the middle of what our property tax rate is. This year, my fun little yellow arc there is showing us we're sliding to the right, and that means we're now the ninth lowest because why? We're cutting taxes. I see you, Mr. Volkey. You like that, didn't you? We're cutting taxes on the property tax, and this is presuming all other jurisdictions keep their rate the same. We don't know what their rates are going to end up being, but if we compare our '26 rate to everybody's in '25, this is where we will end up. Some might raise their taxes, some might decrease, so we'll give you a summary of that when everybody passes their budget. But right now, looking good that we're going to be within the 10th lowest. All right, so, it is a modest tax cut, and here's what's showing you that it's $18 for a $300,000 home, 500 for a single-family average, and then, if you're fortunate enough to live in a million-dollar home, then obviously it would be a little bit more. So, not a big tax cut, but we do like to lower tax rates around here. All right, so this is an interesting graph. This shows you the property tax revenue, not the rate, but the revenue over time, okay? So, on the left, the axis is millions of dollars, and you can see the red line, you know, keeps going up and up as things do. But what's really interesting is when you look at the blue line, which is if you factor in inflation, since the administration came on board in fiscal year 2020, the real dollar amount of property tax revenue has remained basically the same. It's been flat. It's gone up a couple of times, but because of our tax revenue cap, it's forced us to lower the rate that limits what we come in. So, when we're not raising more revenue than the general inflation rate, this stays pretty stable. So, I thought that was interesting. I put a little yellow dotted line there on for you. This is another interesting story. We have the second lowest homestead credit in Maryland. Who wants to guess who has it lower than us? You are right. You're right, Councilmember Pickard, and Talbot's level is zero, which is insane, but they have a weird thing going on over there. But anyway, ours is 2%. Most other counties are around 5%. Some of them are as high as 10. What the homestead credit does is, even if your assessment goes through the roof, you're only being taxed on 2% of that annually, right? So, if you get a 30% increase in your assessment, next year, you're only paying 2%. The next year, you'll pay 2%. You may never catch up to that actual market value. What that means for the county is that there's $13.1 billion this year of market value in homes, like the true assessment rate of your home across the county versus what we're taxing it. Now, you might think, man, it'd be nice to have that revenue. Sure, but this is a great protection for our primary homeowners, and it also provides a buffer for when and if there is a real estate downturn. We would have to lose $13 billion of assessment value before our revenue even was touched, okay? So, this is amazing protection for the county. To illustrate that, if you look about 2/3 to the left of this chart, when it was during the housing bubble, you see, when everything goes down, the red still never caught up with the green. That means the county revenues never went down on the property tax side. So, we were held harmless during that, at least on the property tax side, not on the recordation and transfer tax. Okay, income tax revenue, a little bit different story. We're doing okay there, and again, as I said earlier, we are getting what I consider some one-time fiduciary returns at the tail end of the kind of enforcement enhancement that happened over the last three or four years. But as we look forward to 2026, with the changes in the federal macroeconomic policies, we are projecting a decrease in growth rate, okay? Now, we're still looking okay, and we have a solid fiscal foundation here, but there is the potential that we will see the high growth of the past start to go down, okay? But that being said, if we look at our original budget over budget, we're looking at 4.5% growth of income. If we look at our revised growth, what we'll actually think will come in this year, then '26 is only a little over 2% above that, okay? Now, here's what I was talking about. Hujah made this grant for us, or this graph, which is great, but I bracketed up in the top of those three big years, the last couple of years. This is the percentage that's coming in as these one-time revenues. So, we don't want to budget for that because we don't think it's sustainable, and the current presidential administration has dogged IRS, and they don't have the staff to do the same level of enforcement, obviously, that the previous administration did. So, we don't anticipate that these are going to be at that high level. In fact, they may go down, and you see our '26 number is actually a little bit below what the '22 number was. So, we are preparing for that. But remember, we budget on the recurring side, and then we add this as one-time. Okay, so, income tax, how do we compare to our neighbors? We're the fifth lowest. We have that progressive tier, so there's three different rates. We have the 3.2 for the higher earners, 2.94 for the big middle section, and then, if you make under $50,000 of taxable, you pay that lower rate, so that's why there's the dotted lines going across. But if you just take our average rate and you look, we're the fifth lowest. All of our kind of peer jurisdictions, the other central Maryland counties, they're all the way to the left of that, which means you all can brag during MACO meetings that you have among the lowest tax rates in the state. Okay, here's the income tax story. Same interesting phenomenon that I saw here. If you look at kind of today's dollars, even though the income tax revenue has gone up, of course, the amount, if you look at it compared to inflation, has stayed relatively flat throughout this administration. And again, that's because of the high interest rates and all of that. So, just kind of puts things in perspective there. Recordation and transfer. We are projecting that we're bouncing off the bottom. We're seeing some modest recovery on the amount of activity, and real estate home prices are still high. So, we are projecting a little bit of growth this year. If we look at our revised number, we think we'll get around $117 million this year, so we're projecting a tad more than that. But we budgeted conservatively last year because we were still on that bottom, and we were only at $102 million. So, we're looking at hopefully $120 in the year coming up. This will show you the reasons. We had that giant spike, and then it came down as real estate activity fell off, but now we're starting to recover and hopefully get some more organic growth there. I wanted to show you this graph. This is the look-how-smart-we-all-were graph. When that peak went up, we didn't budget to that amount. Why? Because we knew it wasn't sustainable. How do we know that? Because we study history. And we look, 15 years ago, same darn thing happened. It went up, it came down. I was on the council during that time, and at the time, the county did budget to that peak, and it was bad news when it came down because that was recurring revenue we lost. I wasn't going to let that happen. This administration, this council, didn't want that to happen, so we budgeted to those orange dots, which means, yes, we overachieved, and we realized that as fund balance instead of recurring, but we don't have an $80 million gap to make up like we would have if we had budgeted to the high amount, right? So, pat ourselves on the back. Nice job, you guys. Okay, here's the story on the housing transactions. That is the blue. That went way down. As you can see, more recently, it's starting to tick back up. It's very dependent on the mortgage interest rates. Interestingly, the average price has not declined. That tends to mean there's not enough inventory. I think we've had a little bit of debate about housing around here, so I won't go into any more. But this is showing you the mortgage rates. Look how high they are. If they start going back down towards 6%, you're going to see increase in activity, which means we get a taste of the recordation and transfer, which is good for the county. Now, here is the transfer tax. I put in this special slide for you guys because this is the part that's dedicated only to the Housing Trust Fund, okay? And as the county executive mentioned in his remarks, we're getting a boost there. We knew it would come. It's now finally coming, so we are looking at about $10.8 million. That's a big increase from the budgeted amount last year. This comes as more homes sell, and specifically, more homes that are above that million-dollar threshold. The extra little bit of transfer tax that's tacked on for those transactions don't go to the general fund. They go to the Housing Trust Fund, and those are spent on affordable housing outcomes. So, you will see those in the ACDS budget and the Partnership for Children, Youth, and Families budget. But we're looking at about $10.8 million. They do have a healthy fund balance there, so the expenditures will be more than that as they're utilizing some of the fund balance that they built up this year when we overachieved the budgeted amount. State shared revenue. This is money we get from things to state taxes and gives us a bit of. Highway user funds, they're down just a tiny bit in '25, and we're putting the new amount in '26, which is a bit of an increase. Table games is largely flat, but we are seeing an increase in admission and amusement tax, so that's good news. So, all things considered, we're looking at between a 4% and a 6% increase year-over-year, depending whether you're looking at our original approved budget or what we're revising it now. Here's just a graph of the state shared revenue. You can see that it's been pretty steady with modest increases over the last four or five years. That big bump in the middle of the graph is when the VLT funds were considered state shared, but that is no longer the case. Local sales taxes. This is hotel-motel tax, which is doing pretty good, and it's our local parking tax, which I mentioned before, and it's our kind of archaic telephone tax, which goes down every year because people are getting rid of their landlines, right? So, I did mention that we are increasing the local parking tax. That's 60 cents per 24 hours now. We're increasing that to a dollar. Interestingly, it was set at 60 cents back in 1999. That was a whole millennium ago, okay? Now, if you did the math and you calculated out what that would be in today's dollars, it's actually more than $1. It's something around $1.15, $1.16. So, we didn't even bring it up to the inflation rate. We thought, you know, a dollar was a nice round number. But we're going to look at maybe in the future, making that index instead of a flat rate so we don't have to go 25 more years before we change it. Here's what the local sales tax was. Look at that dip during COVID, but now we can see we've recovered. If you look at the '25 number, it's just a little bit above where we were pre-pandemic, and then, of course, it's jumping up in '26 because we're bringing up new revenue for the increase in the parking tax. Licensing and permits. Most things are flat here, so not a lot of action. If we look at budget over to budget, it's about 2% increase, but if we look at revised, we're actually ticking it a little bit down from what we think we'll get in '25. Here's what the licensing and permits looks like over time in a chart, and you can see '25 and '26 are higher. That's because, remember, last year, we did have an adjustment in some of the permitting fees, and that started October 1st of this fiscal year. All right, investment income. This is a fun one. We are getting an extraordinary amount of investment income, but it will not be there forever. We're enjoying the high rates just like everyone else, so we do budget some of that as one-time revenue. The forecast for the budget-to-budget from '25 to '26 is $14 million compared to $11 million, so we did tick it up about 27%, but we think that we will get at the end of this year up to maybe $41 million, which is great, but that will be realized as one-time. And then, here's the potpourri, the mismatch of everything else. I don't need to go through everything here, but we wanted to provide this as a reference. These are things on page 60 of the budget book and kind of other fees and revenues. And all things considered, we're actually downgrading that a little bit budget-to-budget compared with last year. Remember, last year did have the last of the ARP dollars, so that's part of that. Inner fund reimbursements. This is when the general fund trades around with other different funds, like utility fund and WPRF and things like that, so it just evens out all the books. It's more accounting than anything else, but you can find that on page 60 of your budget book. And then, this is a great story that you guys get a lot of credit. We've worked together to increase the amount of the Revenue Reserve Fund. We started a while back at 6%. We worked at 7%. Now, we're at, I think, a very good amount at 8%. Every year, we've been funding that to the maximum level, and if we do that again this year, which is proposed in the budget book, we'll be at $178.8 million. That is funds squirreled away for emergencies and economic downturn. That is money that realizes interest income as well, so the amount of cash we put in is less than the amount of growth, and the delta is the interest income that we're earning, okay? Now, here's a handy-dandy sheet for you. This shows you all the tax rates and fee changes proposed. We only put the changes in, so you don't see income tax because that stayed the same. You don't see the WPRF fee because that stayed the same. We're just showing you what changed on this slide. All right, let's talk about expenditure detail. Here is the pie chart. Half our money goes to our friends at the Board of Education. This is what it looks like fully loaded, so remember, there's a direct appropriation, but then there's everything else that we do in support of the Board of Ed. When you include it that way, it's a little over 49%. Public safety is the next biggest slice of the pie, and then, government operations. All right, here's the money behind the slices of pie. You can see what it looks like in real dollars. That's $1.1.2 billion to the Board in the fully-loaded budget. Here is a reference sheet of all the new positions that are going into the budget. You know, there's a bunch of little, you know, plus ones here, there in agencies, but the ones that I'll mention, and the county executive said in his speech, we are creating the new Department for Animal Control. The county executive felt strongly that they needed some new positions to do this right, so there are six new positions in animal control. And then, remember, there are 35 other positions in existing government, mostly in the police, that are moving over to that department as well. The police department is getting six new positions. The vast majority of those are associated with the Real-Time Information Center. Rakin Parks is getting maintenance and park ranger positions because we've brought on a lot of new facilities and trails to their inventory. They need people to take care of them, so that is what we call an operating budget impact from capital programs. And then, the fire department, the county executive mentioned, this is a really great outcome. We're hiring dedicated staff for their fire training academy. This will actually save the county money because right now, field staff have to come off their shifts to do training. We pay them overtime to do that, to cover those shifts, so this will actually cost less to have these dedicated positions, and it will allow the field staff to stay in their normal shifts, right? So, good news all around. Okay, the pay package. We have tentative agreements with all our bargaining units. Generally, things are averaging about a 3% cost of living, and we're also doing that 3% for our non-reps and for our contractual workforce, as we have done throughout this administration. The incremental cost of the pay package is about $18 million, and I did want to call out that there is one group that's getting an enhanced salary package, and that is the school health assistants, the certified school health nurses. They are getting a 7% starting salary increase to help hire those. Those are really hard positions to hire, and I believe they have some additional certification requirements, which is going to make it even harder, so we're trying to sweeten the deal there a little bit. This is just showing you our debt service. About a little, close to half is the Board of Ed, and then, General County, and then, you see their community college, and then, our little bit for the Compass Point Golf Course, the gift that keeps on giving. Here's what it looks like over time. You can see that the Board is actually kind of going down in terms of real dollars. We did a big slug of school projects. It's starting to normalize a little bit, but the community college and the county side have been remarkably consistent over the last seven years. This is a fun map because it just shows you the overall debt as a percent of assessable base, and what's fun here is you look at Anarundel. We're a little bit different than every county that's around us, right? If you look at our peer counties, they're in that 3% to 5% range. Our friends in Baltimore City are above 5%. We're doing a little better than that. We're at 2% to 3%, and that's something we can be proud of. And when we talk about capital budget, I'll show you the affordability slide that shows you that we're really doing great on that. Here's the debt service to operating revenue, so this is a ratio, and what's really cool about this is you look at the end of the last administration, the beginning of this administration, we're actually on a downward trend.[1720.33] we're actually on a downward trend. So, we have a very responsible debt service program, and we've also been, obviously, growing the operating budget, so those things together show that our ratio is declining, which is, I think, really cool. This is to show you that we're fully funding our actuarially determined contribution for our pension program. We should all be very proud of our pension program. We have a stable and, I think, very solid pension program, and that is a huge future liability, but we have a good handle on it. 157.8 million dollars, and you will find this in the budget book, it's the exact same number. So, we traditionally and always strive to fully fund what that recommendation is for the pension system. Similarly, on retiree healthcare, or OPEB, we are also funding what was recommended by the actuary there. What's interesting is that the county portion on the trust side actually went down a little bit this year, and that is because we have a five-year market average that helps determine what our contribution is, and we had a really good five-year window. So, the last year was really great, the year we dropped off that five-year window was really bad, so that was good news for our valuation overall. All right, let's dive into the Board of Education funding. This is 98.1, or 98, 981.3 million dollars of direct appropriation, so that's one giant check we give to the board in those 14 categories, and they have autonomy over that, but we also support them on our side of the books, on the county budget, for debt service, OPEB, Pago, school health, and school safety. And then, this year, the state budget shifted about 9.3 million dollars of county school pensions over to us, okay? So, we're adding in that 9.32. All things considered, it's about half percent, or, sorry, 50% of the overall budget. So, this is when you look at all funding sources, the county is about 55% of that, and the state is the next biggest chunk, they're a little over a third. If you look at the unrestricted funds only, we're about 61% of the total unrestricted funding, okay? So, not quite two-thirds there. Here is some highlights. County Executive mentioned, it's the biggest incremental funding for the Board of Ed on record, and that's not even including the 9.3 million that we have to put in to cover those teacher pensions. There's about 63 new positions, county exec went through them in his speech, but we're meeting all the requirements. Another thing that's important is the school system wants to transition each grade level to have its own laptops, so they put in a request to do all four. Obviously, that's a lot of cake. We could do two this year, so we're biting about half the apple off. That's about 3 million. Hopefully, in future years, we'll be able to bring in the other grade levels. And then, we continue the middle school program. There's a pilot program that the superintendent feels very excited about for non-invasive weapons detection, so we're funding that. And, overall, compared to what the request was on the county side, it's about 67% or two-thirds. So, community college funding, they submit a request every year based on what their Board of Trustees passes. We didn't quite give them the full amount, but we did give them a little over a million dollars in incremental funding, and, again, this doesn't include their portion of the state funding shift that we got for their pensions as well, but the county funds 37.5% of their total funding. This is what the three-legged stool looks like. The county has traditionally been the longest leg of that stool, but we've been working very well and collaboratively with the community college to try and get that to be a little bit more equitable. They've done a great job of making some adjustments in their tuition, and the state funding has lagged a little bit in recent years. So, our library system, we fund about 90% of them. They have a year-over-year increase of about 2.7 million dollars, so a good year for the libraries. And now, we'll talk a little bit about the operating summary. So, this is everything rolled up. We've got 2.23 billion dollars of recurring revenue. We're realizing 6.5 million of one-time revenue. This budget has 176.2 million of fund balance programmed in, so that gives us the 2.41 billion dollars of total revenue, and that's what's going to match all of our expenditures. And then, remember, we're holding $10 million in reserve. That goes into the contingency fund, but we're holding it separately. Then, the 14 million that's in there, that's usually in there, as the county executive mentioned, this can only be appropriated with legislation, so you will have the final say as the final fiscal authority. So, the administration would bring a bill down or a request to you all to utilize some of that funding, and then you will treat that as any other appropriation bill. Okay, here's the fund balance utilization. We've got that 6.5 of investment income, we're putting in the 176 of fund balance, so that's 182. Here's where it's going. Most of it, Pago to capital budget. This has been a great strategy over recent years, to put fund balance into the capital budget. It helps keep our projects on track, and it enhances the bond funds and the impact fees and everything else. County Executive mentioned the Millersville Library, which some of us have started calling the library, and this is going to be in the operating budget because we can't fund it in the capital budget because it's not on county property. So, we're doing it in the operating budget, but we'll have a memorandum of understanding, we'll share that with you with the YMCA. So, this will be two years of funding. We're going to get that library built for half the cost in half the time. It's a really great model. We're doing something similar with the Resilience Authority and the Edgewater Community and Recreation Center. That's being done outside the traditional CIP process, we're having the Resilience Authority do it. Again, we're going to deliver it faster and cheaper, and I think that this will be proof of concept for doing more public benefiting projects this way. We're super excited about it. Anyway, Revenue Reserve contribution, 4 million dollars of cash, we're recognizing about 1.7 of interest income, so it's an overall increase of about 5.7. The Campaign Finance, Campaign Public Financing Committee recommended an additional 1.5 million dollar contribution of one-time funds to the Public Campaign Finance Fund. That will give it a total of 2.5 for this election cycle. Just as a reminder, we'll have one more budget if they want to request having any more in it, but this money will get completely through the primary election of the upcoming cycle. And then, there's about 17 million of other one-time expenses in various departmental budgets, so that trues up to the 182.7 number, and you can see that we zero out, there's no deficit, there's no surplus, 0-0, bing, balanced budget. Last couple of years, we've been in the same place, no ballots, no deficits, although it wasn't too far in recent past, when a certain friend of yours was on the county council, we had pretty severe structural deficits. We were able to bring that up, and then the pandemic hit, we had a very temporary structural deficit, but as revenues responded and rebounded quickly, we were able to close that back down again, and we've had balanced budgets for the last four years on the structural side. All right, real quickly, in the capital budget, here's a reminder, this is fun. Hey, look at that, three AAA ratings. If you're keeping track at home, that's nine As altogether, so this is a real gold star for the county. It helps us borrow money at the best possible limit, but it also recognizes just kind of a feather in our cap that we're on a stable fiscal footing and that we're a good investment overall. So, we love maintaining that. I was a little worried this year, we had a lot going on with all the federal stuff and the state budget, but we made a great case, and the ratings agencies continued our AAA rating there. Now, this is a great slide, and I know there's a lot of numbers on here, but this is the debt affordability model, and you'll remember that Gus talked about this in the PAB deliberations. So, we have four affordability ratios and guidelines. They are boxed in that gold color to the left. These are all ratios now. The debt per capita used to be a static number, we've now indexed that to CPI, so it goes up each year as well. And so, we compare our affordability model, which is the upcoming year plus the next five years, looking out to the six-year CIP, are we staying within those limits? And what you want to watch for here is if it's trending upwards and we're getting to a point where we might be outside those limits, right? But what you see on this page is a very stable trajectory, so all of our affordability ratios are well within limits, and even if you look all the way out to fiscal 31, which is almost impossible to imagine because it starts with a 3, right? We're still well within those limits. So, this is a sign of a stable capital program, and this is something we're really proud of. Up at the top, you see that the new authority did not change at all from last year, so last year, we did bring in 30 at 170 million. We're keeping that level up, but all of the existing levels are staying the same, right? This is showing you the use of bonds and Pago, and if you look all the way down at the bottom, it's showing you the amount over or under the overall affordability. And so, in FY '26, the upcoming year, we're about $6 million under in the proposed budget. That's important because we're not borrowing against future years. It wasn't so long ago that there were times when the upcoming budget year was over affordability, and that's really kind of taking a little extra from the future years. So, this administration, we've been very deliberate in making sure we didn't do that. So, not only is this year under, but the six-year cumulative is about 9.5 million under. So, that's good because things change, and you always want to have a little bit of room. Now, I do want to acknowledge that '27 and '28 are lumpy years, and they're still above what the annual kind of affordability limit would be, and we're making up for that for '29, '30, and '31 being less, okay? But that's done deliberately. You remember, we're in the tail end of our big capital infusion, where we're pushing all those big school projects through, and we've got other big things like the 911 Center and things, so we're doing that. I think it'll be another, you know, one big year in '27. Once we get through that, we'll be kind of back to what I would consider a normal level of capital activity going forward, and that will set up the next administration and the next county executive, whoever they may be, to have a stable capital program as well. Okay, here's just a listing of the, what is this, the PPI funds, I think, to show you that we are fully appropriating all of those. A little bit is going over to '26 and '27, but by and large, we've almost completely appropriated the 250 million dollars that was infused thanks to the PPI fund. These are the capital projects that the Resilience Authority is taking the lead on, so the EV charging infrastructure, the Glen Burnie Plaza redevelopment, Certain Stream and Shoreline Erosion Control Projects, the Beverly Triton Nature Park Shoreline Project, and then the Edgewater Community and Rec Center. These are being led by the Resilience Authority, and these, I think, will be very successful, and as the Resilience Authority grows, I think we'll be able to do some more projects this way, which will be great. This is just showing you how the capital budget program breaks out. The different colors are different classes, so you've got Wreckin' Parks is green, Roads and Bridges is purple, Board of Ed is blue, as you see, and then here's what the dollar amounts are. You can see the FY '26 amounts, as well as the total six-year program. So, this year, it's 451 million is the total for FY '26, and all told, we're looking at about 1.6 billion-dollar capital program over the next six years, and that is all funding sources. Here's a couple of highlights. Board of Ed funding, again, big year for them, 184 million, that includes the remaining three projects in the Old Mill Master Plan. We are bringing in a new Board of Ed project, the Ruth Parther Eason. This is coming in the out years, but that's the first new project we brought onboard for a while because we were working through that Old Mill Master Plan and the other cohorts in there. We fully funded what the community college capital request was, so that's really great. Remember, those projects generally get about half percent of their funding from the state as match, so we like those projects. Libraries, we're fully funding the new Glen Burnie Library, which is underway, and then the Brooklyn Park Library renovation. That is an enhanced project this year, which the library system is very excited about. And then, there's the new Millersville Library, that's in partnership with the YMCA, but as a reminder, that's funded in the operating budget. So, all told, in the general fund, there's 13 new capital projects. I think there's four new ones in the various enterprise funds as well, but three of these are Wreckin' Parks projects, there's a couple Roads projects, and then there's a few general counties, but we did really concentrate this year on existing projects, so there's only a handful of new projects, and those themselves aren't big, large-scale projects. So, again, we're trying to concentrate to finish what we started, okay? As I mentioned earlier, 137.5 million dollars of Pago to help supplement the bonds and other funding sources, and then, to reiterate, we're under affordability in the upcoming year as well as the whole six-year CIP. Real quick on enterprise funds, because I know, I'm not running out of steam, but you guys are probably sick of me, just real quick, this shows you each of the funds, how the service charges, and everything is appropriated. Utility fund, solid waste. Here's revenues and expenditures. Anyway, budget documents, you don't have to take my word for it, you each have your own pink hard copies. They are also found at aacounty.org/budget. You can also find the four-pager that I think the county exec staff was handing out, and a version of this presentation in a much more digestible form will be posted as well, and I will send you a copy of this as a PDF. With that, I'm very pleased to shut up and take any questions, or we can all go about our day, up to you.
I have a question for you about this contingency fund, real quick.
Yes.
You said that there's $10 million proposed in the budget that would be under authorization of the council, and you said there's another 14 million in there. Is that under authorization of the council?
Yes, so the CAO contingency fund, we put a number in there every year. Last year, it was 13, we've put in 14 this year, and this is the money that we use for snow removal, for the fourth quarter transfer, so it's a tiny, tiny bit, it's like, I don't know, less than a percent of the overall budget, obviously, but this is the money that we put in every year, and then you get appropriation bill at, you know, typically very soon, a fourth-quarter appropriation bill where we true everything up to where we think it's going to be, and we pay for the snow removal costs or any other unanticipated thing. So, that is as it's always been. What I'm telling you is the $10 million of the federal Impact Reserve Fund, or whatever the proper name is for it, that's being put in the same account, so it will be treated the same way, but it's, although it's technically co-mingled, we're treating it differently, so it's not the 14 million of recurring, it is 10 million of one-time funding specifically to utilize in the event of these, you know, federal impacts. Now, if we don't use it, that's fine, at the end of the year, some or all of it will fall to fund balance, and it will be available the following year, but if it is utilized, it can only be appropriated with your approval.
Thank you. So, any questions or comments from the council, Ms. Fiedler?
I just want to thank you, as always, Mr. Trumpauer, for your very animated presentation, and I noticed you don't have any water with you, do you?
No, I chugged some before I got here.
Very impressive, thank you.
Well, you know, you guys schedule me right after lunch, so I got to keep it poppy here, you may start nodding off, you know?
You had me engaged till the very end, so thank you.
On the edge of our seats, waiting to...
Very good. Well, if you have any questions throughout the process, the team, myself, very much looking forward to working with you, your staff, the auditor, her staff, let's make it a great year.
Okay, I agree, I agree, and I agree with you, we can only spend it once, so let's spend it, you know?
Great.
Spend it well.
Thank you very much, enjoy the rest of your day.
Thank you. So, I would like to take a quick recess because, as animated as he was, I'm getting a little sleepy, I need to walk around and wake myself up. So, could I have a motion to recess for literally like three minutes, you know, just so we can walk around? Five minutes, we'll make it an odd five. So, may I have a motion to adjourn for five minutes?
So, moved.
All right, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, we will return at, what time is it? 1:47, so, go.
The Ethics Commission has asked that I advise you that, under certain circumstances, members of the public may qualify as lobbyists when they testify before the county council. If so, the law requires that certain information be filed with the Ethics Commission. The Chair of the Ethics Commission has asked that those who wish to testify in any form review the general information on lobbying sheet located on the Ethics website under Forms and Publications. If there are any questions about lobbying requirements, please contact the Ethics Commission at 410-222-4412.
Before we open our discussions and public hearings, I would like to remind everyone in attendance, whether they're testifying or as a member of the audience, we must maintain decorum at all times within these chambers. Please understand that individual conversations in the audience are very disruptive to the proceedings, and I would kindly ask you to step out of the chambers if side discussion is necessary. We will now open our invitation to the audience. This is an opportunity to speak briefly on any subject not included in the printed agenda. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
No, Madam Chair, we did not.
So, no one signed up ahead of time? Is there anyone here who wishes to speak during the invitation to audience? So, if there is anyone else here who wishes to speak, please come up at this time? No one? All right, the invitation to audience is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of Bills Number 925 as amended and Bill Number 1025 as amended.
Bill Number 925, In Ordnance Concerning General Development Plan, Region One Plan. Bill Number 1025, In Ordnance Concerning Comprehensive Zoning, Region One.
Mr. Hunt.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt, for the administration. With me at the table, I have Kelly Kenny, our supervising county attorney, Mark Wildonger, our senior planner, Cindy Carrier, our planning administrator, and Jansen Evelyn, our Deputy Chief Administrative Officer for land use, and I believe we also have David Zaden from the State Department of Transportation who handles their TOD program in the audience to answer any questions.
Okay. So, is there any discussion? We will now open the joint public hearing on Bill Number 925 and Bill Number 1025. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
No, Madam Chair, we did not.
Okay, no one signed up ahead of time? Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on Bills Number 925 or 1025? The joint public hearing on Bills Number 925 and 1025 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 925 and 1025 as amended.
Bill Number 925, In Ordnance Concerning General Development Plan... Bill Number 925, Inordinance Concerning General Development Plan, Region One Plan. Bill Number 1025, Inordinance Concerning Comprehensive Zoning, Region One.
Okay. Mr. Smith?
Thank you. I would like to make a motion for reconsideration for Amendment Number 13.
Okay. There is a motion to reconsider the vote to Amendment Number 13 to Bill Number 1025. Is there a second?
There's a second.
Okay. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on the motion to reconsider the vote to Amendment Number 13 to Bill Number 1025.
Ms. Radbien?
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey is absent. Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one absent. The motion to reconsider Amendment Number 13 to Bill Number 1025 has passed.
Okay. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 13 to Bill Number 1025.
Amendment Number 13, this amendment changes the zoning of certain properties located at 7280, 7150, 7100, 7221, and No. Numbers Corporate Center Drive Hanover, and 2310, 2320, and 2330 Ridge Road Harmons, from W1 Industrial Park to MXDU Urban Mixed Use, and 1118 Baltimore-Washington Parkway Harmons, from OS Open Space to MXDU Urban Mixed Use.
All right. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, this amendment that we had voted on previously was that northern cluster of the BWI Airport car rental place. If you think of that general area, just north of that is a cluster of land that we, this amendment, added some additional properties that the landowner did not want included in that change. And so, our desire was to go back and actually, you know, accommodate them. I think the administration was onboard with that change, and so, this effort is to, when we vote on this, the goal is to vote this down, because there is a subsequent amendment that will actually cover the exact parcels that are the aggregate ones, that does not include the parcels from the individual landowner who's, you know, got included in that bigger, sort of larger portion, so.
Administration?
Mark Wildonger Office, Planning and Zoning. I think that was perfectly explained.
Okay. All right. Any discussion? Ms. Radbien?
I'm sorry. Could you say what? I got very distracted for a moment. Can you repeat what you said? I'm so, so sorry.
No, no. So, when we voted on this amendment last time, it included a number of different properties that were changed to MXDU. And so, there's at least two parcels, I believe, that were impacted by that, who did not want it there to change to MXDU. They wanted it to stay W1. And so, this effort, along with the administration, was to ensure that we kept their wishes intact, and so, we have a subsequent amendment, with Amendment Number 21, that actually will codify the MXDU pieces without their, that individual landowner's property. It was the administration that also, the individual landowner communicated with you all as well to say, hey, and then they felt that this was a way to help remediate that. And so, we're going to vote down, the intent is to vote down this amendment so that it cleans the slate, so when we add the next amendment, 21, it's the actual properties that are encumbered with the MXDU designation instead of including that other individual's ownership.
Got it. Thank you.
All right. Okay, for the no further questions, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 13 to Bill Number 1025.
Ms. Radbien?
Nay.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Nay.
Mr. Smith?
Nay.
Ms. Pickard?
Nay.
Mr. Volkey is absent. Ms. Fiedler?
Nay.
And Ms. Hummer?
Nay.
Six in the affirmative, six in the negative, and one absent. Amendment Number 13 has failed.
Okay. Just a reminder that there'll be some going back and forth between bills in order to keep amendments about the same properties together. There are two amendments to Bill Number 1025. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 21 to Bill Number 1025.
Amendment Number 21, this amendment changes the zoning of certain properties located at 7150, 7100, and 7221 Corporate Center Drive Hanover, and 2310, 2320, and 2330 Ridge Road Harmons, from W1 Industrial Park to MXDU Urban Mixed Use, and 1118 Baltimore-Washington Parkway Harmons, from OS Open Space to MXDU Urban Mixed Use.
Mr. Smith?
So, this bill actually allows what we just undid with the previous one to actually capture the exact properties that will be changed to MXDU, excluding the two that was previously adopted. And so, motion to adopt.
Okay. Any discussion? Administration?
Mark Wildonger Office, Planning and Zoning. Exactly what Councilman Smith said, it removes three properties, Lot 2R, Lot 11, and 12 then, from that previous amendment, Office Planning and Zoning supports the amendment.
Okay. All right. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 21 to Bill Number 1025.
Ms. Radbien?
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey is absent. Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one absent. Amendment Number 21 to Bill Number 1025 has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 22 to Bill Number 1025.
Amendment Number 22, this amendment changes the zoning of a portion of the property known as Parcel 189 on Tax Map 9, located at 7390 Baltimore-Anaples Boulevard Glen Burnie, from W1 Industrial Park and R1 Residential, to MXDU Urban Mixed Use. A portion of the property known as Parcel 189 on Tax Map 9, located at No. Number Baltimore-Anaples Boulevard Glen Burnie, from W1 Industrial Park to MXDU Urban Mixed Use, and a portion of the property known as Parcel 181 on Tax Map 9, located at the track area between I-97 and Dorsey Road-Lithicum Heights, from W1 Industrial Park and W2 Light Industrial to MXDU Urban Mixed Use.
Okay. Mr. Smith?
Thank you. So, for those that have been following along, this is the Cromwell site specifically, so it has not been easy to balance progress and process. But my goal has always been to ensure that, you know, I'm able to facilitate that communication between county government and the citizens who are impacted by it. And so, in the county, we need support, we need, we do need to support efforts to add addition to housing at all price points. Obviously, this aids that with all the other changes we've done with mixed use throughout District 1 specifically. And we need to support efforts to add housing and to encourage the use of transit and to make our county grow and prosper. That has been evident with my involvement in land changes throughout Region 1 that makes sense. At the same time, we need to ensure that we, that all residents have a voice in what their future looks like. We are in uncertain times, but this much is certain. Cromwell Station is a perfect spot for transit-oriented development. That has never been the issue. However, the county government needs to work in partnership with the state to leverage resources and keep growing, while also addressing concerns of citizens who live in the immediate area. Over the past few days, I've had the chance to speak with the communities near Cromwell Station, with the county executive and his staff, with the state, and I appreciate the letter and the sort of feedback that you all have been sort of pouring into this effort. And while I still had concerns of the speed of some of the land use changes over the last week, what gives me hope, and hopefully, the community some comfort, nothing will happen overnight. We will all have time to weigh in on design and amenities, which the state has also promised to deliver on. The development will take place on a relatively smaller portion of Cromwell Station. Initially, we were discussing, at least in my mind, some 200-plus acres, when reality, it's going to be a lot smaller, somewhere around 16 acres is what is initially being targeted. And so, that encourages me and gives, it gave me more data to give to the citizens, whereas before, I think some of the information that they were receiving, some of the information that I was receiving, certainly didn't lend itself to be an ideal situation, and they felt like they were being blindsided. They did have a meeting, and I did have conversations with the leadership of the association over there. I think the results that was given back to me was roughly half and half. And while I may not always agree, or they may not always agree with every decision that I make, even the half that didn't necessarily want to move forward, what I am comforted is, they were involved and aware of what was going on before we made the decision. And that's what I've always wanted to do in this capacity, is always be transparent with those communities and neighborhoods who have elected me to represent them. And so, with that, I do encourage my colleagues to vote for this amendment, to rezone the Cromwell Property Station to MXDU. Motion to adopt.
Second. Any discussion? Administration?
Yes. Good afternoon, council members. Jansen Evelyn, on behalf of the administration. I just want to express the administration's strong support for this amendment, which would allow redevelopment of Cromwell Station to go forward. As you all know, and as the council member just articulated, the state came to the county with a vision for Cromwell Station. TOD, transit-oriented development that delivers new housing, jobs, and economic activity. Rezoning this amendment supports this vision, and it aligns fully with the recommendations from Plan 2040, as well as prior GDPs from the county. So, we appreciate and support that you all are going to meet this moment. Thank you very much.
Okay. Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We talked about this area of your district, Mr. Smith, extensively at the last council meeting. I have agreed with you in your statements in the past that nobody really knows a district, like the council member that represents that district. And I heard what you were saying, and I support transparency, and I supported your amendment then, and I'll support it today, and I just appreciate all the work that you've done in the very short timeframe.
Thank you.
All right. Ms. Pickard?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to thank my colleagues and also encourage you to support this amendment. If you go back into the plans that have been laid before us since about 1997, transit-oriented development has been targeted here. It's been talked about. This is one of those projects that's been really long awaited, so this is an exciting moment, and I look forward to being a part of that conversation with the state as they move forward on their exciting projects, not just here, but at Odenton, and I understand at Bowie, and some other places. So, this is a real opportunity for us to meet that state investment, and I'm sure, when the state gets involved and they begin their community engagement, they will also draw a circle around Cromwell and include all the communities around that, including Glen Burnie. So, I appreciate, I'm excited about this opportunity, and I would just urge my colleagues to support this amendment. Thank you.
Ms. Radbien?
Thank you. This, I'm not sure if this is the question for our sponsor or the administration, but I'm hoping someone would know the answer. Given the size of the, you know, the area that we'd be rezoning and the category to which we are rezoning it, do we have an approximation of, you know, sort of the maximum number of housing units that could be provided?
So, I had a number of conversations, actually, in reference to that, because initially, what gave me significant pause was, if you go back to the Small Area Committee, the SEC, that reviewed this a few years ago, when they zoned it MXDT, their intent was for it to be 22 houses per acre. We passed 75/24, and the administration in this bill designated that as a 44 units per acre, so essentially doubling it. And so, that was really the major concern that I had initially, was that didn't go back to the 22 and 44, on what I thought was 200-some acres that they were going to be trying to develop, is a lot of houses. That's several thousand, to be honest, even more than that. And so, when they sort of talked about the range, I don't think there's anything concrete specifically in writing that talks about that, but the scale, at least of the property that they are interested in developing, is roughly 16 acres. So, even if you did and sort of maximize that to every inch possible, in theory, that 16 times 44 is what realistically could exist there, in the proposal that they're, at least the ideas that they're floating right now. So, I don't know the quick math, what that is, but that's in the ballpark of potentially what could go there.
About 700?
Yeah, exactly.
Is it exactly 700?
704. But, you know, we know, we know in Anarundel County, this property also is very close to the watershed and Sommet Creek. There's a lot of environmental mitigation that would need to happen, plus any sort of setbacks and all those other regulations. We know we get about, what, 70% to 75% yield on any project. So, either, but in addition to that, we also know that if you're going to build housing near a transit station, that's where your density should be. We should really think about it as how many people were actually getting off the road, because they'll be able to choose to take the light rail all the way into Baltimore to work. So, that's a really exciting opportunity.
Absolutely. I was actually excited about that number being high, because it really is a great location for it. And so, I thank you for, you know, figuring out how to reach out to your constituents and, you know, work with the county and the state folks, too, to make this happen, because I really think it'll benefit the whole county. So, much appreciation, and I know, I know that was a lot of work, so thank you.
Appreciate it.
Ms. Pickard?
Well, and just, you know, it falls on the, it's going to come, it's going to follow the redevelopment of our own county property at 7409 BNA, and that is even closer to our single-family neighborhoods, and then even closer to the Glen Burnie Town Center. So, as we step out from the town center to 7409, which is going to be about 250 mixed use of income and mixed dwelling type, and then we get closer to the light rail, we'll have a little more density, and then we step back down to our single-family home, communities going up through the more suburban part of the area. So, it's a really exciting time for North County, and the more flexibility and possibilities that our code allows, also allows for really good design. And as Secretary Day likes to say, we can start creating great places, really great places for Anarundel County.
Mr. Smith?
I was going to just say to the community, when they come back and listen to this, I did have a healthy conversation with the county executive, and, you know, we spoke about some of the security concerns that existed in that area, and just as we're ramping up the Arctic, for example, he was very open-minded about additional security technology to some standpoint for the Cromwell Plaza that exists right there. There is a community that is adjacent to that, that is right behind it, that I've been in a number of occasions over the last years, and so, that's usually what their main concern is. But, so I want them to know that the security discussion did take place, and he was very open-minded about adding some additional security features so that we can put their mind at rest, because that's usually the first thing that comes out of the community, of the organization's concern, is safety and security. And so, I think, between the state and what the county is sort of offering, I think we'll be able to at least mitigate some of their concerns with that. Thank you.
Ms. Radbien? Okay. No, and the Odenton Station is in my district and is rapidly moving ahead. I think everything's out to the public to get the ideas and get moving on the development around that area, and so, I look forward to Cromwell being the next step in this as we move forward. And I'll echo what Mr. Smith said. I think when you have positive development, small businesses and homes around a station, that any public safety issues are going to be mitigated, because I think we all know some of our train stations right now look like just big, empty parking lots that aren't the most inviting places to be sometimes, and so, anything of that will be an improvement all around. So, I'm looking forward, I'm speaking to our state representative out here, we're looking forward to this TOD development in our, throughout our county. So, all right. Is there any other comment from administration or staff? All right. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 22 to Bill Number 1025.
Ms. Radbien?
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?